And Swan, the vice chair of the board, our chair is not with us this evening. And we'll start out by taking attendance. So. Please say hi, Mr. Shagan.
Hi, here.
Mr. Wild, here. Ms. Cal, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, here.
So four of us are here, and so we will proceed. The, we have two hearings tonight, but one of them is being continued. So typically, when one's being continued, we take that for it to continue it. Um, so. It is the twenty-six Beacon Avenue, uh, special permit proposal. And, um. Do we have a date that they would like to continue it to? Six, can I, yes, would you please indicate? Could you introduce yourself as well?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, a member's board, Douglas DeShane with Finer and Nicholson representing Solus. Um, yes, we've asked to be continued till April, your meeting of April ninth. Um, I do apologize, uh, this has been our second, uh, continuance request, but quite honestly, it's always been my. Uh. Determination that it's best when seeking a special permit to have a full complement of the board. And, uh, unfortunately, the last two meetings that we've had scheduled, um, we've been faced with an absent, uh, member. So. All we're asking is to be continued to the ninth so that we can have a full board. Uh, I do understand your meeting on the twenty-eighth, but, uh, in all honesty, I will be out of country, uh, that week, and so would like to go to the ninth.
Okay, thank you. Um. There, there's one, I, uh, extended circumstance, I think everyone on the board should be aware, and Caitlin, I wonder if you could summarize kind of what's, what requests we've had from, um.
Sure.
Or maybe I can, if you.
So we have had, um, just a, a public comment submitted by the owners of Seventeen Oak Street, um, their direct of butter to Twenty-six Beacon Street. Um, and they just wanted to inform the VBA that they are going to be, um, out of town, um, on April ninth, um, and I guess would appeal to the VBA. Um, to perhaps be different time, so they could have public comment, we heard.
Right, and this is unfortunate, and it's already been scheduled twice, and that we had to postpone because we haven't had a full board. We, we do have. Another alternate member that's been going through the approval process, so hopefully we'll, we'll be in a stronger position soon, but. Is that person who, who wrote you the letter here this evening?
Do not believe so.
Okay.
Perhaps online, um.
Well, that's kind of where we are now, um, I would. I guess I, you looking for a motion to continue or any discussion?
So do, do we want to keep it on the night?
Well, that's the motion we're looking for. Yeah, I mean, basically, he can make it, he can make a following one, be a butter, be one, to submit any comments, can't make it on the night.
You can't make the March one, can you make the twenty-third of April?
Uh, I'd have to check, but. We, we have been continued now three months, um, you know, again, due to not having a full board. And, you know, our butters, with all due respect, you know, they are entitled to have representation here. They have certainly, uh, allowed to submit written comments. Um, and in fact, um, in light of the notice that they called, um, I'm going to try and reach out to them. To see if we can't meet, so I can hear their concerns before we even appear before your board and see if there's. Anything we can do to address those concerns. So I will commit to doing that, um, if we can push off till the ninth.
That works, and we can ask the. Yeah, but. If they can't, then.
Yeah, they've already written one letter, but they wanted to also. Alright.
I'll make a motion to, uh, continue, was it ZNC twenty-four dash two, Twenty-six Beacon Avenue to April ninth.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, is there a discussion?
Yeah, I guess I would like to say if, if the next meeting is, is, doesn't work for the, for the petitioner, and the following meeting doesn't work for the abutter. Seems like if we're pushing it off to the ninth because of a request of. The petitioner that, that pushing it off one more time is, is fair to the abutter. And while I understand that they want a full complement of the board, we have enough people here to make a, to legally make a decision. And so that's their choice to ask for the continuance, so. I, I would not be in favor of voting for the ninth, given those circumstances.
A point of order from, uh, we don't often have these with a full person board, but how many votes does it take? To decide whether to move some to the ninth, is it?
I, I think you're just talking about the, the simple majority of the board. It's not the decision itself or the approval or the, no.
Okay, Lynn, what, Lynn, what would you suggest instead?
Uh, the twenty-third, I think, like, had first been raised.
But I think the twenty-third is the date that you said you could not make it, right?
No, I can't make it the twenty-eighth.
Oh, the twenty-eighth.
Which is my next meeting.
Oh, the, yeah, the twenty-eighth is full as well.
It's the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
I'm on that page.
We already have a, we have five things that evening, so. How about the, uh, two weeks after the ninth, which would be the.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
April twenty-third.
Same month.
I, I, again, with all due respect, I, I wish I was here presenting tonight, or I wish I was here presenting last month. But I didn't have the opportunity to have a full board, and so I had, you know, continue. Um, I, I honestly don't know what my availability is on the twenty-third, but, again. Is the tail wagging the dog here? We're the petitioner, and I, with all due respect to the abutter. You have. You know, they have the opportunity to be represented. My councilors, they're not going to be here, and, uh, they have the ability to. Submit information, and moreover, I've committed to the board that I would go meet with them, uh, in the next two weeks to see what their concerns are and see if we can't address.
Okay, I mean, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, and I think we need to go ahead and vote on the motion, unless somebody else has anything else to say as part of the discussion. Does any, would anybody else like to make a comment from the board?
I mean, I, I think I would agree with Ms. Cal that, that, you know. Courtesy that you're looking for. Could be extended as well. But I, I'm the petitioner, my client's petitioner, we're asking for the courtesy because there isn't a full complement of the board here to vote. If I go forward with a special permit, I need four out of four votes. And again, in twenty-five years of practice, I never put myself in that position if I don't have to, or if my client, you know, directs me otherwise. I was ready to do this presentation last month. I was ready to do the presentation tonight, but again, I didn't have the, a full complement of the board. So. It's not like I've been asking for continuances, you know, from my own personal. It's been because I haven't had the ability to appear for a whole board. So I don't know if it's quite the same scenario. Where a but is asking to, you know, force us to push our meeting because they're not going to be here. Again, I, I prepared and ready to do this now for two months. But again, it's always been my practice not to go, we only have four members and I can't lose one. So.
Well, it's unfortunate that we got here, but it takes four vote, takes three votes, we heard, to continue this, and to that date you've picked, and if two people don't want to do it, then. I don't see how we're going to vote to continue it to that date.
Well, uh, uh, in all fairness, I didn't say we want to do it, I, I just said that I agree with Lynn.
Okay. So getting back within the board here to deliberate our motion, um.
You know, if we're deliberating, I would, I would reluctantly support, uh, the motion to continue, uh, because I do. I do agree, I, I, I understand what Attorney Shane is saying, and. Yes, uh, so I would reluctantly support the motion to continue. Uh, but I do think that we would need to see, you know. Certainly, that every effort has been made with the abutter. I, I committed to the board that I will meet with them in the next two weeks.
It, it's not a great situation, and a lot of it's due to the board here, not, not being at full strength, so it's, uh, I understand how we got here. Butter, Lynn, would you like to say anything else before we vote?
No.
Okay.
I'm good to go.
Let's go around the table, Lynn, but.
I vote to continue, for the continuance.
For the continuance to the ninth.
April ninth.
Lynn?
I vote no.
I vote yes, to continue.
I'll vote yes as well. So the motion passes three to one.
Thank you very much, and I will reach out to the neighbors and our report back to you.
Yeah. Okay, you're welcome. Um, alright, that gets us to the primary purpose of our, uh, meeting tonight, we have a hearing for. Um, eighty-seven High Street, there's also a minor modification. Uh, it would seem to be easiest on the board, hopefully, if you would agree, that we would. Listen to both of these at once, and then they just say. Okay, would that agree with me?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, so if you could, uh, introduce your team and, uh, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, and members of the board, it's good to see you this evening, Lisa Mead, Beat Allen Acosta, Thirty Gray Street, and new reporter with me is my colleague Ryan Clemmons. And, uh, we have a new architect on the project, which you've seen from your designs, uh, Kevin Lattati. And, uh, my client Matt Healy is here as well, and online is, um, Kevin. Kyle, sorry, is Kyle. Who is the, um. From the Timberframe Company, who's going to be doing the work, who was here last time. Um, so, uh, as the chair suggested, we, in addition to coming back with the additional information that was requested, having had a peer review. Um, we are seeking a modification to the approved design from the two thousand and seven, um, permit. And what I would like to say first is that I think that this project is a really great example of how input from the board. And from the neighbors, and in this instance also, um, Preservation Trust has actually, uh, made a better project. Um, the applicant, um, sought out, um, a new design, uh, and I think that you'll see it in a minute, that is, uh, obviously reminiscent of the building that's there. Um, and I want to, I want to thank everybody's participation as we go through this, because, um, I think, I think ultimately, we're going to have a barn that is going to be saved, um, and it's a better project, and it will be much more, uh, longer lasting. If you could go to the first slide, please. So, just as a reminder, the property contains a single-family home and a barn, um, which was dated around seventeen. Ninety-nine. Um, at the last meeting, the city engaged Preservation Timberframe to do, um, to go out and do a peer review of what was proposed, and to provide a report. Uh, there was an original report provided a couple of weeks ago, was updated with some values, uh, yesterday, I believe, is the date of the, what is today, Tuesday, yeah, so yesterday. Uh, additionally, as I said earlier, um, Matt has engaged, um, Kevin to review and redesign, uh, the renovations. Um, and the idea is, of course, to, um, preserve the building after it's been dismantled and reconstructed. Um, and then use it as additional space for the single-family home, but not as a living space, which was originally approved in two thousand and seven. So you go to the next slide, please. And I just wanted to remind everybody, um, because I think it's appropriate as we go into the design, um, so here is a west side, the west-facing barn, and kind of gives you an idea, if you looked at, um. Aaron Sturgis's report, and also Kyle's report, they go through these sides, but there's the, the, um, garage door that was discussed, this is the clavering side. Of the barn, um, but this is the side that faces the yard and the house. Next slide, please. And here are two shots of the rear, um, this is where the addition is, um, going, you see the foundation that's been poured and the bulkhead that is referred to, and of course, the. Um, there's shingles on this end of the barn, and this is in the backyard. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the side that is on the east side, um, where the hedgerow is, um, and the hemlocks. Um, as both Aaron and the applicant know, um, this is good for the barn and bad for the barn all at the same time. Uh, there was some concerns, um, from the neighbors before about not losing this hedgerow. Um, and we're going to talk a little bit about that, we don't intend to, to lose it at all, but intend to be very careful about putting it back, so. So it's, it's helpful to the barn, uh, but also then lives a lot longer, and we can talk about that, um, as we go through this. Next slide, please. And here's the front, as if you were looking up the driveway from High Street. Um, and you see the houses on the right, but then you can see the barn as it's been turned, um, so this is the end. Um, and the next slide, please. Um, and so this is a little bit further down, um, the driveway, so you can see it as it comes up. Uh, next slide. So we want to go over the, uh, the new plans, uh, talk about the minor modification for the design changes, talk about how we are moving the barn at all, continue to be in compliance, because we're shifting a little bit as the construction is. Happening in order to put the, um, panels on the outside of the barn, so there's no further approachment on that, uh, east side. And we talk a little about, about, um, Aaron's peer review and our proposed conditions. Next slide, please. So with this, what I'm going to do is turn it over to Kevin, um, to go over, um, his changes, uh, versus, um, what was there in two thousand and seven. Uh, why he did what he did, um, and, um, we'll go from there.
So the upper left corner is the, what was approved in two thousand and seven. Uh, what we've done, one, well, one thing, as we all know, the two thousand and seven, this was going to be a guest house. So, the, um. Construction was more for residential use, I'm assuming, but it didn't really have anything to do with the way a historic. Post-beam structure is built, so in our review and looking at it, and also for our clients' use. Um, we chose to simplify and go back to what would be more appropriate for carriage house, particularly with a post-beam structure, so everything falls within the framing. Next slide. This is the end wall, if you look up from High Street, uh. On the right, uh, left-hand side was what was previously approved. Uh, one of the things that was sort of. Not in the character of the original was the rake returns. Uh, which are the diagonal trim elements from the roof for then returning. Uh, what we have is the, uh, same rake detail of the original structure. Uh, here again, the, the frustration, the windows are within the typical timber frame. And we just switched it, we have a sliding barn door, uh, on the. Right-hand side as opposed to the left-hand side, which is more appropriate for what they use is for the, the current owner. Um, you'll also notice on, you know, where the concrete base is, uh, with the SIPs panels, the, the structure of the framing. Is, since we're repurposing as much of the framing as we can, we're disassembling the structure, it will go to, uh, uh. Make timber framers, and then we'll take it all apart, look at all the materials, assess where the damage is. Reconstruct it on the ground and then put it back together, but the proportions of the original structure are the same as what we'll do again. Um, but with the foundation, where they poured it, um, and then adding the SIPs panels to it. There's a overhang, so instead of having a concrete base, we opted to put a brick. Base, uh, underneath it, so it just gives a little bit more character. Uh, more appropriate for. Certainly wouldn't have been brick in the seventeen ninety-nine, but through many, many evolutions of the structure, that would not be uncommon to. Switch a stone to brick, wanted to dress something up. But given we had the opportunity with the way that structure worked, we thought it would be a nice, nice element, so that's added. Uh, that's not added to the abutters property, because again, we didn't, we're. Keeping the setbacks as they are, so in order to do that, with the SIPs panels being added, we've actually shifted the building. Onto, uh, basically four, four and a half inches to the east. So that, uh, you know, we're not approaching on that side, and we will not return the brick, but the hedgerow, I think, will mind. Um, next slide. And this is from the rear, which, uh, it's not really in public view, but again, we're just keeping this, keeping the structure simple. Next slide. Uh, this is the rear elevation. I'm sorry, the, yes, east elevation, uh. Facing the others, uh, there's really no reason for the program inside the structure to have. Windows on the lower level, um. Also, given the hedgerow and the density there, you're not going to get any light in, and you just have, uh. Better increase of, of rod of the windows, uh, where windows are appropriate for the use of the structure, we put the windows on the second floor. Uh, again, that, the, uh, hedgerow pretty much covers that, but it also gives privacy between the two, uh, properties. Next. And this is the, the plan. Uh, basement plan, again, the foundation is already there, the structure is already there, uh, first floor plan. And then the next floor is the second floor plan. You can see, if you switch your eyes, you can see the post-beam structure within the walls, and the SIPs panels are outside. The idea is the structure will go back up, the sheeting will go back up. So that even though you will not see the sheeting from the outside, because you wouldn't anyway, because you have the siding on top of it, but from the inside. You'll still have the view of what the inside of the carriage barn looks like now with the, the material still present. So from an interior point of view, we're really trying to preserve that. The look that it has now, separate from without robotic structure.
And post-beam, which, um, thank you, Kevin. Um, and so before we have Kyle, I, I just want to point out, I think that, um, it's important, I neglected to do this to begin with, that, um, Mr. Sturgis said in his report. The safest and most comprehensive approach to saving this building is a thoughtful disassembly and redesign for adaptive reuse of the structure. And so we think that this proposal does that, um, Kyle updated his, um. His plan on what's going to be saved, not saved, and he's going to go through that in a minute. But I think also with, um, Kevin's design and fewer windows, fewer openings allow more material to be reused than, um, what was going to be able to be reused before. Um, because, um, it's not going to have to be cut up as much. Um, so with that, I'm going to, um, let Kyle talk about, um, his, um. The plans relative to what stays and what goes, and of course, this is all with the comment that those things that we can't see, which Aaron recognized as well. When it's disassembled, will be reviewed to determine what condition they are in, to determine whether further reuse can be possible. Or if they can be repaired, or if they would have to be replaced. So that, if you're on Kevin and you can't, and Kyle and you can, um, can you go through your drawings?
Uh, thank you, thanks for, sorry I couldn't attend today, but, um, I'm happy to be on Zoom and answer your questions, and so I'll go through the. Through the model, there's a lot of colors there, I understand, um. And so it's, the red are the ones that, um, Preservation Timberframe and ourselves have agreed are, um. Pretty much beyond repair, there could be two posts that might be salvageable in part, but, um, so you're, it's a. You know, four, four-bent system. And there's, so there's eight posts, and there's six of them for sure are going to have to be completely, um, replaced. And then two of them, we may be able to hold on to just part of that. So our approach is, um, pretty similar to what Aaron would do, and I know even Aaron, um. Maybe because of the shop now, but he tends to take frames like this that are in pretty bad shape, and the, his approach is similar to what we would do, which is to. To take it down carefully and, um. And while this frame is standing, just to make sure that everybody understands what we're going to do, is we're going to, this, we will update our drawing. Um, some of these stud frames and stuff are, um, best guess, I guess, I haven't done that close of a measurement, but essentially, we're going to take. Pretty tight measurements to make sure that even small members like studs are going to go back where they belong and where they can, and some of the stud work and some of the gables, you'll notice, um. Well, there was one, I'm sorry to back up here a little bit, but, uh, the gable that faces, uh, the road, for example. You know, there's a tie beam, a drop tie beam, we'll call it, over the girt level, that actually is missing, which I actually didn't pick up on one of the first visits, but anyway, our general intention is wherever there's a SIPs exterior wall, you have the walls, and you have the two gables. Um, it's easy to reuse a lot of those timbers, even if they're not what I would consider, um. Hundred percent structurally sound, and the reason for that is the SIPs panels are structural by themselves, so. We were really, Eric, trying to, we're trying to do two things, in my mind, anyway, we're trying to preserve as much of the timber frame that we can, using SIPs panels, and. You'll see some of those rods and some of the pictures you might have picked up on that for the, the, uh. Three interior collar ties, but, um. So we're trying to save as much as we can, and the SIPs panels provide structure, so the second part we're trying to do is. When we're done, um, you know, I feel pretty strongly that my work, I don't want to be involved in a project if I don't feel like it's going to last for like a hundred years or two hundred years, so I don't want to. Present, uh, either the town of Newburyport or to Mr. and Mrs. Healy, you know, a frame that's going to be, um, it's just, it, it's not going to pass the. It's not going to make it through the passage of time, so I, I'd like to think that this carriage barn is going to outlast some of these, you know, pretty astute, pretty, some of these homes in Newburyport themselves, because. Um, we're going to get a chance to really make some awesome repairs. In my shop, and then put it back up, and then the SIPs panels, everything's in board, and so the SIPs panels will provide the structure that we're looking for. And Aaron's kind of the same, making that same approach as well. Um, to be honest, if it, if the frame was in better shape, um. And it required me to, to do what's called insitute repair, I probably wouldn't be interested in the frame, only because I got to drive, uh, like an hour and a half, two hours, so. It does fit into our. Into the kind of approaches we like to do, and we have done frames like this, where we, we took the first store in Hennaker. And, um. We restored that frame, you know, in our shop. And then put it back up, it didn't actually go back in Hennaker, went back in Wentworth, but, um, you know, we're pretty familiar with making. Um, preservation approached repairs, you know, wood to wood, I like to think that the wood to wood is what holds up the best, you know, scarfs and such, um, so that's what our approach is, and I know that Aaron. We see each other fair amount through the Timberframers Guild, and, um, you know, his, his. Uh, professional approach is, you know, almost, well, it's a hundred percent in the preservation world, and I, I tend to. I'm pretty diverse, and when it comes to timber framing, I do a lot of new work, but most of my work is tradition-based, and then, uh, I do some preservation work, so do some, I've done quite a few barn repairs. So I guess I'll just move through this, it seems like I can click on these things, right? Can I move to the next slide on? Am I allowed to do that?
We can go here for you, so just say next slide, I'll, I'll go ahead.
Okay, if you could turn to the next slide, I'll, I'll try to speed things up here a little bit, so that. So again, those are the, the two, actually, okay, there's, you're looking at the same view from the street, so there's the beam, the red beam that's missing, that was taken out a long time ago, and then the two larger beams. Are, um, in really bad shape, and what we're going to actually do is. We're going to have to replace those, they're just, there's not enough left, I mean. And so, but the orange pieces, you'll see there are the joists, and they're. They're not in great shape, and they're always undersized in an old barn like this, but we can use them, because we're going to put a structural floor system above that that you won't see, but you'll. Help to kind of keep that magic of the old, um, carriage barn. So next slide there. And then. Having talked to, uh, Fire Tower Engineer, he's a premier, um, heavy-timbered engineer, and, um, at his stage in his career, he's. Says that he's more interested in preservation work, so. We're, again, trying to get this back, so it would be back to the seventeen ninety-nine period. Um, so some of those, there's a trust in there that's got to go, and even Aaron said that it had to go, it's not of the time period, and lots of, uh, sistered, um. Roughson, Joyce, or not Joyce, tie beams that run the whole length, and those were not original, so what we've done is we've taken those out and we've added. Um, three sets of rods where those, uh, what I call raised collar ties are, and those are going to hold. Hold, make, basically turn those fairly undersized timber into what you'd call a trust, because the rod is taking all the tension. And then those, uh, orange rafters, and then the, the raised collar tie is acting more like, um. That's more in compression, the collar tie above it, so there's little tricks you can do, and I, I find that, uh. there's little tricks you can do. And I, I find that, um, kind of handsome. And it also answers the question when you walk into the timber frame, if you get up to the second floor, that's where the, where it's always, the floors, the roof system is always where the, the beauty is. That's what people, you know, pay all that money for and, um, so we don't want to fool anybody. We don't want, you know, we don't want somebody to go up and make it look like those rods were original. And they're, they're not going to be original, but they're going to be handsome. And they would, they never would have put those rods in there during that time period. I mean, I do believe the, one of the barns that I'd seen that Aaron had done these same kind of drawings on, um, actually had a more, so instead of those rods, historically, they had a tie beam in there. And this frame, for whatever reason, didn't have that. And it might've been, I don't know, I'm speculating. I don't, I don't know why that, why it didn't have tie beams in there. But, um, these rods are going to be new. They're going to be black. They're going to be solid rods. Um, and then threaded through the ends of the rafter tails and then, uh, with a big, big square washer and a bolt and a nut to hold it together. So that's our structural approach to that. And then you have the SIPs panels up on the roof that will provide, also provide more structure and then also be a, uh, super insulated envelope, both the walls and the roof. So and it looks like that's the end of my, so, um, I just want to say one more thing. And then I, my approach to, to preservation work is right along lines of, of, uh, Preservation Timber Framing and also current with the Department of Interior is that when you make repairs, you want to, you want to do, there's plenty of evidence of, of really amazing repair work that was done, you know, a hundred years ago, a hundred and fifty years ago. And what you want to do is make those kinds of repairs. And it was typically wood to wood. And so, you know, but that's the second, also, you don't really want to fool them. You don't like, like, it would be wrong to, um, if I was going to do a, do a post bottom repair or something like that, I would use new material. I wouldn't like take it from something, I wouldn't go get to another barn and salvage that material and put that in there, because you don't want to fool, you want a preservationist to go in there and say, oh, look, this is, you know, this is repair, this is a repair, repair done, you know, in the twenty-first century, um, done well, but it was done in the twenty-first century. So we're, we're trying to make sure that the carriage, the original carriage barn is respected. And anything that we change, even though it will be done with the highest, uh, craftsmanship that we can, that we can muster, um, you know, be done with new wood, new, new, um, new green pine in that case, or matching the species that was already there. So that's our, that's our approach. And Aaron's approach is very similar to ours.
Thank you, Kyle.
Okay.
You can go beyond those, um, slides there. Down to the next, there you go. So, um, the first thing that we want to ask the board to do is to, um, is to grant the modification for the two thousand and seven, change to two thousand and seven design. And as Kevin reviewed, um, essentially removing the architectural add-ons, which will form more of a residential style and replacing them with a design that's more simple and frankly, in my words, uh, more indicative of a true utilitarian barn rather than a house. And, uh, then the proposed plans for the disassembly and assembly, follow the advice of the peer review expert. We maintain all of the setbacks that was approved in two thousand and seven. Um, and ensure maintenance of the hedgerow and restoration of and stabilizing, stabilizing and strengthening the building for years to come. So if you go to the next slide, two slides long. So, um, just, yeah, right there. So, um, this was the application from two thousand and seven, if you go to the next slide. And just as a reminder for the neighbors who I think are here, um, there, there's no, that's before the barn was turned. So that's when it was, um, long lies to High Street in the next slide. And this is what was proposed. And so that's what was that built, the foundation, and as Kevin described, because the SIPs panels are going on, which would extend it closer to the east. The building is being shifted a little bit on the foundation to the west, so that that, um, foundation wall stays exactly the same. And that's the plane that was approved in, uh, two thousand and seven. Um, and then we have proposed two conditions, uh, Mr. Chair, that if you want later on, we can talk about. And, uh, if you go to the next slide, I might have them on here. One is, um, that the, um,
Slide options.
Is the next slide, please. There we go. Uh, one is that, um, that there is an issue about the timbers that we can't see and that are unknown. And, um, certainly we believe that Kyle has the best judgment to, you know, understand what to do with those. However, um, if the board feels more comfortable, then we could have, um, Aaron, uh, affirm those items that Kyle thinks should be removed or replaced or whatever. So for the hidden conditions that can't be reused, and we think have to be not reused at all, we can have that affirmed by, um, Preservation Timber Frame. And then the other condition has to do with the, um, hedgerow. The Heelys have already engaged an arborist, uh, and the arborist would come out and actually, um, trim the hedgerow right now, but then protect it for during construction. So the good news is, of course, that nobody's digging a foundation or anything like that. It would just need to be protected for when the side work was done on the building. And, um, they've already been engaged, but we're happy to have, um, a condition to that effect. So, with that, um, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to take any questions. I, I don't know that I need to go through all the criteria that we went through last time. If the board has any questions about any of that, but it's all in the record. Can leave that to you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. So at this point in the public hearing, we take, uh, input from the public. So if there's, we'll start with that. Anybody's in the room would like to, uh, comment, um, or I guess, or just make a point or ask a question. We have, uh, so, um, yes.
Speaker here, do I do?
Um, can you move over? Why don't you move over so the camera can pick you up? This lens at home, others may give what happened.
Uh, thank you. My name is Jay Igerman. I live at eighty-three High Street. So not direct to butter, but one condo over. And I, I spoke, uh, uh, before. So, uh, first I want to, uh, uh, echo what Attorney Mead said. I, I think this has turned out to be a better project. So, uh, I just want to commend everyone, including the owner, for being diligent. Um, I think, I think this shows, you know, if you put in the time, you get a better result. I want to comment also on the modification, because that's new. I, I mean, I, it, it's not my particular issue. I was more focused on the decod, but uh, just viscerally, it's just a much more attractive, tasteful building. So, uh, I, I commend the team on that. And, um, I thought the proposed conditions of approval makes sense. I think it sets a good, a good process to keep the, uh, peer reviewer involved. And he can, you know, and these, these truly are peers. They do the same kind of work. Just have another set of eyes and, um, uh, have, um, have the peer reviewers say, yes, that, that timber is no good. It's got to be replaced. Sounds right. And then, the hedgerow is not my issue, as I say, that's the people at eighty-five High Street, but they're unable to attend. So, but I know that was important to them. So thank you for that. And, um, I also, I, I did, I did forward a copy of the new drawings to them. And, um, uh, the husband, um, Mr. Moran is an architect himself. And he, uh, he appreciated the shifting to make sure that the plane of the easterly wall is where it should be, is originally approved. That's great. And then on the windows, I think it made a lot of sense with, I think Kyle was saying, no, no, Kevin was saying, which is that because there's a hedgerow there, you probably don't want to fenestrate all of it anyway, because the window is going to rot. And, um, I think for privacy, the Orans would probably appreciate that too. So overall, I, I think this is really great. Um, and I think, uh, I, I kind of wish, you know, it's too bad. You know, we've learned, you know, seventeen years ago, I don't think there was this kind of diligence. And as a result, probably more of the building was lost than had to be. It's too bad. A final point is, uh, other neighbors and my wife too, uh, were, have a question in the two thousand and seven approval. Uh, I think there were conditions of, of approval on limiting use. And, um, I, I know, I know the Heelys have said they don't intend, do not intend, um, to make this into another unit or uh, an Airbnb, but I was wondering if that's still a binding condition from two thousand and seven. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Uh, would anybody else, yes. Go ahead, please. State your name and address. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Rita Mahalik. I'm a board member of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. And I'm here tonight to present the recommendations of Newburyport Preservation Trust co-presidents, Linda Miller and John Colter John. Our counselors. Historical resources like the eighty-seven High Street Carriage Barn are touchstones of shared memory and in great part define our city's culture. Newburyport's high concentration of both grand and modest, uh, authentic eighteen and nineteenth century architecture infuses the city with a special sense of place. The ZBA Board is to be commended for recognizing the historical importance of the eighty-seven High Street Carriage Barn and subsequently arranging for a peer review by esteemed timber preservationist, Aaron Sturgis. His in-depth evaluation was the basis upon which a new architectural rehabilitation plan and a new color-coded three D representation of that structural plan was created. The trust believes in the importance that any ZBA special permitting decision includes all three documents. One, the Aaron Sturgis Report titled Healy Carriage Barn Report two nineteen, twenty twenty-four dot PDF. Second, the new plans titled eighty-seven High twenty-three eleven zero zero Healy Carriage House ZBA Drawings twenty-four oh three oh five dot PDF. And thirdly, the new three D representation of the structural plan titled eighty-seven High Healy Barn Existing Three Five Twenty Four Three D dot PDF. All three documents are key, not just to the execution of the rehabilitation plan, but these documents are what makes the plan enforceable by the city, should something go wrong during the project execution. We urge the board to ensure that they are part of the permit. Thank you to the ZBA Board for taking the appropriate steps in this matter. And thanks to everyone on the project for your work, time and effort. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Did you pick your, I know you said where you're from, but your address.
Fifty-three Warren Street.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else here this evening who would like to make a comment? Ask a question? Seeing no hands, um, is there anybody out in the, uh, audience out there with a few? If you would like to make a comment, you push the raise my hand button and you'll be recognized on Zoom when? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public comment period and move to questions from the board. Uh, who would like to begin?
Just, uh, quickly, very, uh, limited questioning. With respect to the four and a half inches, I think that, um, that the architect may have said it one way and then Attorney Mead, you said it the other way. Uh, and I think that, no offense, but I think you had it right.
Right.
Uh, I just want to make sure for the record that it is the, for the SIPs panel, the structure is going to shift to the west to allow for that panel to be on the east to keep in the
Keep that plane exactly the same.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And, and that's why Kevin explained about the bricks, not carrying the bricks around.
Yeah, no, understood. Yeah, sure.
You can't have a disclaimer to tell you where's dirt, you know.
I, I knew what you meant, but I just wanted to make sure we had it.
All right, um, Mr. Shagun or Ms. Cow, would you like this?
I'm going to just jump off that same question. So is the building actually shifted in its entirety or is it actually shrunk by four and a half inches?
It shifted.
It shifted, so.
So we're taking the foundation, because you say, how are you going to go off the foundation?
Right.
No, we're going to extend the foundation.
Okay, so the foundation on the
On the
West side will be four and a half inches bigger.
Correct.
To allow the post to sit on that.
Right.
Will you do that inside the building too? There's enough for the
On the side that's been shifted?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have to bring something in to support the weight of the
Yeah, I was just curious about that.
It'll be three inches hanging on.
Yes.
Should we go?
I did have one other
Yes, go ahead.
I noticed on the drawing that the first floor has a golf simulator in it.
Right, we're waiting for that.
Is that going to be open to the
As the owner of T B D.
That'd be great.
Ms. Cow, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate the thoroughness of, of the summary of, of the materials and, and, um, it is a complex issue for us. So I, I just wanted to add that.
I'll say just, most people don't know me, but I specialize in older historic homes. This is kind of my, my, uh, thing is to get into old buildings and understand them. So not only do you have Aaron who's looked at it, you have Kyle. And also I'm, I've been reviewing the materials and making sure that, that what's theirs sound, reusable, repurposed.
Okay, thank you. Lynn, did you have anything else?
I do not have anything else. Thank you.
Okay, I, I just had a couple of questions. You know, just to follow up on this growing billion, the four and a half inches, it's not just east-west, it's also north-south, right? So it's going closer to the road, which is why your bricks are.
Got it. Okay. Couple of things came up. Is it, is it, it's still your intent not to have a separate, uh, living, separate unit, if you will, separate residence?
Yes, and we would be okay with the condition that's proposed by the staff notes regarding that. Obviously, it's an extension of the living space of the original residence, but not intended to be anything else, you know, and if in twenty-five years, somebody wants to go in and get a six C special permit, if they still exist then, then they can have that battle at that time, but not right now.
So it's not intended to be a separate residence? Okay. The, uh, your first condition of what you mentioned, for the boards that are hidden or the, the, the structure, the, you know, the beams and things that are hidden, uh, you'd be okay with having Aaron Sturgis be part of the review team, if you will, to kind of veto whether or not that, the board could be used or not. So did I just understand that correctly?
Right. So, so that was the issue that we brought up the last time as well, um, because the, you know, because it hasn't been taken apart, right? So we may be presuming, Kyle may be presuming that there's a particular piece of wood that's okay, and they uncover it and they see that it's not. And so in that instance, then if Kyle makes the determination that this is not reusable, as they disassemble it, they would, you know, set all those aside or whatever, and then have Aaron affirm that he agrees with that and or what the methodology is to reuse, replace or whatever.
And you'd be paying for Aaron to do that?
We, we, not me personally, but Matt would, right. So, uh, it would be part of the peer review.
It's part of the tickets for whoever wants to use it.
Right, yeah. So the, so yes, it would be part of the peer review.
Just want clarity there. The, uh, the second condition on the hedgerow, um, I do appreciate, um, cutting it back from the building, because it's, the building is not going to give you healthy
Right.
Cedar trees leaning up against it. So I get that. And I also personally know that the, uh, the tree person you're hired, he did a lot of very good work at my place, not very far from here. Or from this site, um, he's very good at what he does.
Yeah, he's, that dude's awesome.
What's that?
Sorry, that dude's awesome. He's on, he's done a great job. I'm thoroughly happy with him. Apologies for interrupting.
It says you have the act of, of the arborist trim, prune and preserve the cedar hedgerow throughout the construction process. It doesn't mention what happens after the construction process. I assume it's implied that you're not going to then cut them down.
Well, no, right. No, 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 we're not even right. After we took care of them, now we're going to cut them down. No, 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 right.
Throughout the construction process, um, all right, I just want, at least in the minutes, to be clarity on that. Okay, that, that's it for my questions. So thank you. Um, I guess that gets us to deliberations. So this is where we go around the room. Each person comments, uh, don't forget, there's two things we're deliberating on and maybe what we should do. Well, I guess we can deliberate on, because it's so interrelated. You're deliberating on the, uh, minor modifications to the old special permit with changes to the look of the building, if you will. And you're also deliberating on a special permit for the, uh, for non-conformities for the demolition, uh, and reconstruction. For non-conformities for the demolition uh, and reconstruction. So who would like to begin the. Discussion along the board.
For the D C O D, do you want us to go over the nine problems?
Um, sure. I think you'd sort of hit the highlights, yes.
Okay.
And also, somebody needs to talk to the minor modification too.
Yeah.
Just, just go ahead. We also, I think, need to hit the, there are four other required findings for the D C O D. We have D C O D, then a, then a, the special permit, right, the D C O D special permit, but don't we have to get into the findings?
Yes.
Or we, we haven't already done those from the prior meeting.
Apparently not.
No, we just heard the presentation.
Yeah, so. Let's be thorough. So, you have the floor.
It's gonna take some time.
You can go as far as you can. He's here to back you up.
Yeah. Well, thank God, it's all written down. Um, I guess I could, I could start with the um. The four pieces of findings from the D C O D's special permit application. Uh, first one is the proposed demolition of the structure in the D C O D is permitted under the terms of. Ordinance, since the accessory structure at eighty-seven High is specifically listed as attributing structural data sheets. And follows demolition exceeds twenty-five percent of the structure of the project subject to the regulations of the D C O D and requires a special permit here and there. That's why we're here. The applicant appeared before the Newbury Port Historical Commission on September fourteen. Chair provided the ZBA with a report dated December thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Based on a substantial evidence derived from the public side information testimony at the hearing. And that contained in the detailed application presented, the ZBA finds that there is sufficient evidence to determine the structure. To be demolished in its current form and condition retains no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use. The ZBA further finds that the requested belief will not result in the demolition of a historic structure as prohibited by the D C O D. And zoning ordinance, special permit is hereby granted upon. Uh, substantial evidence in the record that such portion of the historic building, a portion of the structure retains no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use. Taking into account the cost of rehabilitation to meet the requirements of the state building code. As it applies to historic buildings and structures or other applicable laws. Well, does that cover the first?
Yeah, I think, could I add one thing?
Yeah.
I think uh, that. In the context of of this application, this is important, that under the D C O D, uh. The the word demolish uh. Includes pulling down or tearing down or raising or otherwise destroying more than twenty-five percent of all that building's external walls. And for the purposes of this application, the. Destruction or the demolition shall be limited to dismantling, repair and reassemble to the extent practicable.
Good point to be made. Alright, I want to go into the nine points uh, to determine that the applicant's project meets the general special permit criteria. As provided by the N Z O. First one is the use requested is listed in the table of regulations and elsewhere as an ordinance requiring a special permit, the district for which the application is made. Or a similar character permitted uses in particular district, but is not specifically mentioned. Uh, this proposed project requires a special. Permit for non-conformities and a D C O D special permit from the zoning board of the field. Second one is the requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience. Of or welfare, proposed use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, so it meets that point. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The requested use is expected to have negligible impacts on existing traffic. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage sewer system or any other municipal system to such an extent that the requested use of. Developed use in the immediate area or in any area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards that are affecting health, safety or the general welfare. And this requested use is compatible with the surrounding area. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system. Fifth point is any special regulations for use set forth in the special permit table are fulfilled. Any regulations for this use set forth shall be fulfilled. Statement. Six, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to the health or welfare. This requested use. Will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to the health or welfare. Seven, the requested use will not, by its addition to a neighborhood, cause an excess. Of an excess of that particular use that would be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. Proposed new use will not cause any excess of that particular use that would be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. Uh, the proposed use in harmony with. Purpose and intent of the ordinance and proposed use is consistent with the purposes and the intent of the N Z O. And the last one, I'm gonna hide, proposed use shall be conducted in a manner as to. As to admit any dangerous, noxious, injurious or otherwise objectional fire, explosion, radioactive or other hazard noise. Vibration, smoke, dust, odor or the form of environmental pollution. As it is demonstrated in the application to special permit, proposed use is not expected to be. Conducted in a manner as to admit any dangerous, noxious, injurious injurous or otherwise objectional fire, explosion, radioactive or other hazard. Noise or vibrations, smoke, smoke, dust, odor or the form of environmental pollution. And with that said, I would uh, be happy to support the application for the special permit.
Okay.
And note though that the um, golf simulator will be noisy.
Uh, for, for.
Um, just, just one quick correction for the record. Number one, um, finding for the general special permit findings. Um, should not be required special per non-conformities, but it could just say, proposed project requires a D C D special permit. So.
So no, no non-conformities.
Exactly.
Okay. Scripters are in the uh.
Yeah.
This stuff.
We are deliberating, but.
Yeah, no, that, that was it.
That was it. Good. Alright, um. Mr. Delisle.
Uh, I will um, agree with everything that Mr. Shagman said and said very well. And uh, as it relates, as this application relates to the uh, minor modification. Um, I think that the the modification sought is minor and can be addressed as a minor modification. In that, it addresses really only the exterior design dimensions uh, in the life.
Yeah, agreed, I should have said that as well.
So you're ultimately supporting the minor.
I am, I am.
Miss Gao, where are you?
Um, I would agree with everything my colleagues have said, based on all of the evidence in the record. Um, all of the criteria and all of the points that Mr. Shagnon iterated, um, I agree with. And I also agree that the modification requested is minor.
Um, and for myself, I just want to say, first, first comment is, it was made. Jared made the comment that seventeen years ago, there wasn't this kind of diligence, and I would just like to. Thank him because seventeen years ago, we didn't have the D C O D bylaw and. Or ordinance, and you had an awful lot to do with that. So thank you for providing these tools that enabled us to do this, this. At this meeting. Um, I I basically agree with what my colleagues have said, so I support it as well. So now we move on to a vote. I think we should take the minor modification first. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion uh. To consider the request minor and approve the minor modification for eighty-seven High Street. Two thousand and seven dash oh two seven, that wasn't the number in the minor modification. Didn't the minor modification have its own number? It's like twenty-four oh or something.
Uh, it's like it's two thousand and seven dash zero two seven.
Oh, because we're modifying.
There wasn't one for, there wasn't one for twenty twenty-four and five. That the minor modification has its own number.
Won't we leave the number out of the motion?
Okay.
Because we don't often, we often don't.
So it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, um, let's ask, I'll go up to the table. Mr. Shagnon.
There, there was a number.
Yes.
M M dash twenty-four dash eight.
Yeah. Would you like to switch that?
Well, I I I think I did say that, twenty-four, twenty-four dash eight.
I think you did. Okay, just confirming.
And so either way, it's fine, I don't, I'm not.
Take it to your.
No, no, it's, it's fine, the way it is.
We'll leave it the way it is.
The minutes will show that it's, it's all there.
Now, Mr. Shagnon, do you support this?
I do.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Miss Gao.
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's for the affirmative, it passes. That gets us to the special permit, uh. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion, uh. To the D C O D special permit for eighty-seven High Street. Uh, with the. Following special conditions, or do we want to just say as?
Well, I think we should at least refer to them.
Well, the way I can read them, um, the following three special conditions. Uh, the accessory structure, number one, the accessory structure may serve only as accessory living space to the primary dwelling unit. And shall not be used as a separate dwelling unit unless otherwise approved as provided for under the Newbury Port zoning ordinance. Despite any annotations on the drawings regarding a kitchen. Uh, number two, applicant will reuse, restore and replace all timbers, sheathing and historically accurate building materials. That presently exist in the carriage house, except for those materials that are hidden and whose condition is undetermined. These elements shall shall be reviewed in the field as part of the disassembly. And a recommendation for reuse, restoration or replacement. Made by the applicant's expert preservation timber framing or another preservation expert as approved by the ZBA. Number three, applicant will hire an arborist to trim, prune and preserve the cedar hedgerow between the property. And eighty-three dash eighty-five High Street throughout the reconstruction process.
Okay, we have a motion, what's going to be seconded and then I'll recommend it. Is there somebody like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so attorney B, would you like to make a comment?
So on the second um, condition, uh, would you say, or another preservation expert as approved by the ZBA? We don't want, we don't want to take the time to go find another preservation expert. We would just like to say preservation timber frame, since they're familiar with the project.
You okay with that?
And I, I have no objection to that per se, just other than the fact that I think that was meant to cover, should, should they for some reason not be available, you know, at some point. Um, don't have any particular strong.
That's a good point, but he doesn't, you mean if he doesn't want to continue on this?
Well, I think it was just meant to be, like, for instance, if some accident should happen, he's not available. I just think if it was meant, I think, to deal with um, the mechanics and the decision, you know, in that type of situation. But at the end of the day, I don't think it's probably going to make a difference here, so.
So I guess the question, I mean, the, if he's available, we'd like to use him.
Yeah, we all.
So my, my concern is I don't want it to say or and then have somebody say.
Revise or clarify language saying unless, you know, yeah.
Unless he's unavailable. That's fine.
Okay, okay. Yeah, for preservation timber framing and if unavailable, uh, another expert as approved by the ZBA.
That's fine. Okay, see.
Good, clear.
Good. Alright, so we have a motion, um. And it's on the floor.
Yep, this is how second.
This guy seconded it?
Yes.
So we just, is there any discussion? Seeing, we will, we'll vote. Mr. Delisle, you start. Mr. Delisle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Shagnon?
Yes.
And Miss Gao?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for making a much better comment. Alright. That pretty much concludes our public hearings. We just have a very short business meeting. Um. We have, starting with the approval of minutes of our aborted meeting under twenty-seven.
Those were long minutes, yeah.
Hmm.
Well done. It came out a half an hour after we left the building.
So would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, all in, um, as we go around the table, um, Mr. Shagnon?
Yes.
Miss Gao?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
I vote yes. So that's unanimous. So that cuts us, does down to other updates from the chair or planning director. Do you have any updates, Mr. Planning Director?
No, um, I think in talking with Jennifer, um, there, there might be a couple of, uh, just two, it sounds like, despite my, uh, short-term rent unit. Uh, applications that might be making their way towards you.
To what kind?
Short-term rent unit, uh, special permits. Um, again, we'll see, you know, they'll pay about their way to you, but it's.
Investor-owned ones?
Given that, uh, those newer category that can't capture by the special permit.
Because we did, I remember we had a uh. A um.
Yeah.
We had a discussion of, you know.
Yeah.
Some legal question on how, you know, what things we can rule on here.
Yeah, so I think accordingly, the question which I can circle back on is, you know, was councilable at the next meeting, or we can touch base, you know, as we talked about before, um. To have that discussion prior to.
I think it'd be good to get that legal input, because I, I just, you know, we were unsure before.
Yeah.
We kept putting in our agenda each time. I asked her to take it off as Connie Preston kept calling me, or it was.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, given that their potential pipeline, it makes sense to do it at an upcoming meeting. I think perhaps the next, they'll just confirm whether or not you can patch it and it'll be here.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
So it'd be nice to have that legal input before we have to rule on one of these things.
Yeah.
Right, my, my understanding is they have to approve, apply by a certain date that's coming in a few months if they want to continue, right? Somebody told me that.
Um, well, if they want to be operating within that window of time before they, the amortization.
That three-year period.
In that three-year period, um, they need to apply to that before the.
Don't they have to apply by June thirtieth if they want it to keep going?
Yeah, I forget if they tried to, I'll just forget the exact date, but they do need to apply before that, and so in effect, if they don't get that application in, they don't get the permit, then they're operating without a permit, uh.
So you'll, if you come on, on the way, that'd be good. The update is, by the way, I want to get us our, another associate member, so we. I'm not so fly so close to the edge here. When do you expect it to be?
Uh, I think the next council meeting will be the second reading, uh, at that appointment, so uh, at the very next meeting, uh. First meeting in April.
First meeting in April, we should be up to full strength again.
Yeah.
This, no, we went for so long there without having to.
Yeah.
You know, continuing for lack of a.
Oh, yeah, what's that?
It's that, so yeah, very.
Didn't we have a meeting where there were only four of us recently?
I, I had last year.
Last year?
I remember we had one.
In December?
On some.
Yeah, it was either December or November.
I do remember we had one.
Hmm.
One with four.
I couldn't, I couldn't remember.
This is pretty rare. Do you have anything else?
Well, I certainly don't.
I don't, I don't certainly have anything, so. Um, oh, I was, how about the gas station project?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
What do we expect to see there?
I would have just said, hey, there's no news that I have on that. I'm sorry, yeah, no, um, I don't have an idea. I don't know they're gonna, I would expect in the coming weeks, we're gonna have, you know, like, they said they want a little more time to work on the plans. Um, given, you know, closing date and so forth. I did ask them to clarify and close that loop, so I'll reach out to them. Um, just to, to get confirmation that, uh, both the closing and the approximate date of the filing.
So maybe April and May or something.
I would expect sometime in April, but again, if they, if they languish any longer, we go into May at that point, so.
Okay. Alright, well, does anybody have anything else they'd like to talk about? Okay, then we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, what about Lynn? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn, for calling in, making this possible.
Who wants to second that? Who wants to second?
I'll, I'll second.
Just sitting here all night.
Yeah, I'll second, second, second that, sorry. For the record. Alright, we seconded it. There we go.